Right, like all the North Aurora committee, the whole meeting for Monday, August 21st, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino, trustee Christensen, trustee Curtis, trustee Gately, trustee Lowry, trustee Nedved.
Here.
All right, audience comments. Seen no audience, trustee comments?
Nope.
Okay, under discussion item one, Steve.
Thank you, mayor. Item number one tonight is regarding video gaming. This is part of our recent workshops that we've been doing on code cleanups. The last two, as you know, were for mobile food vendors and for special events. With video gaming, we were last in front of the board at the end of 2021 and had made some changes. Basically, right now, I'm going to walk you through where we're at currently with video gaming in the community, and then we're going to lead with a workshop discussion at the end. And should the board want to make any changes, then we'll do what we've done in the past, which is bring it back to committee to hold a look at the changes, make sure everybody is on the same page of what those changes would be. And if you want to move forward, then it would just go to change by ordinance at the following village board meeting. So with that, I'm going to go through a very brief presentation to walk us through the discussion. So just a little bit of background here. So we have by very specific classes allow video gaming. So not every liquor license by state law, nor by the villages liquor codes allows video gaming automatically. For us, it's the A, B, and C are basically big restaurants, small restaurant, and restaurant with beer and wine only, not full liquor. J1 is a brew pub license and T is for tavern. We only have one tavern license. And the board changed the code years ago to basically say that to qualify to even be a tavern and have video gaming, you have to be in business for five straight years. Basically, that's only one business in town that meets that current criteria. The, the thing we added, one of the most significant things we added was a supplemental video gaming license that requires the village board to do a review. That's why we bring liquor licenses now to the committee of the whole and then ultimately to the village board for approval. Some of the, these are the, the criteria, if you will, that the staff uses when we have complaints about whether a restaurant is acting as a video gaming parlor or and not as a restaurant. You know, the first one is it's pretty generic, the way it's written currently, but basically video gaming is supplemental to the business. Food must be, this was the one that we typically use. It's the idea that food must be cooked and prepared and served from a kitchen by an employee on premises during hours of operation. The essential rule is this, it's not very specific, but when you go to a restaurant, you should have the expectation that when you order food, someone is going to physically prepare food, not microwave it or drop it in a deep fryer. That was the board's intent. When we put this in here, someone should be physically, whether it's cutting vegetables or, you know, you can fry food too, but you know, someone should be cooking and making sure things are cooked to temperature. An actual cook. Establishments must retain a minimum of 750 square feet. We used to require 50 seats. It ends up being, we took the, I believe it was the fire code that on average, it's like 15 square feet per chair. So that comes out to 750 feet. So that's what we required for the minimum floor space dedicated to dining and video gaming. And the initial floor plan at the time of approval, so that's when they bring it to the village board for the initial review. It has to stay substantially the same. So someone can't come in here and say, I'm going to put 20 tables in and then open up immediately a four. So that would be a trigger that we would say, okay, you're not acting in good faith. This is just a little overview right now. In North Aurora, we have nine businesses. We were made aware of a business that wanted a license today, so that'll be 10 if they get it. But it's a, it's a business that's been in town for several years and has recently sold about a year or two ago. Then there are, there are total 51 machines, so everyone can have up to six machines in an establishment. And that's the revenue share that the village receives is about 156,000 a year. And then through our licensing and registration, we collect both a fee for the supplemental license at $500 and $250 per machine per establishment each year. So we also added a definition about a video gaming parlor to make it more specific that if you fall in this category, you automatically in our mind are video gaming parlor, you're not a restaurant. And video gaming parlors are one word written prohibited. We just, we don't allow them. But just because we don't allow some, that doesn't mean people don't try. So what we end up having is in the last few years, we've had two businesses that we've, that we've put on notice for acting as video gaming parlors, soon to be a third one. And the mayor, as liquor commissioner, is apprised of all those situations and, and brought in. And when they feel that that is out of line with our code, we will issue basically a hearing. And the way that works is you can do a pre-hearing and talk to the owner and see if they can rectify it, put it on a path of compliance, or you can just go straight to a formal hearing. Basically, what it is, is at the formal hearing, they have to either make changes, and if they don't make changes, then we can suspend, revoke, fine the business for acting out of good faith. They can appeal it. We had a business almost do that, and they would appeal it to the Illinois Liquor Commission. But in the past, we've, we've done that route twice. One of the businesses ended up closing. The other one actually did go on a path of compliance. And they did what they said they would do. But what ends up happening is and for whatever it's worth, we'll call it the bare minimum, they're still meeting the code, but it's not necessarily the intent of the board. So it's, it's very subjective on what would be a good way to really restrict businesses from, you know, not being a video gaming parlor and, and being restaurants. If someone wants to be a video gaming parlor, they can do the bare minimum requirements and then just change their operations as long as they keep hitting that bare minimum. So what we see in the field, things that are kind of triggers to us in these situations are a limited food menu. So if someone says, I'm going to open up at his restaurant, you start to see that they have like eight items on the, you know, four appetizers, you know, hamburgers, hot dogs, things that are simplistic, don't require a lot of, of, of cooking skill per se. And then what ends up happening even worse is when you go in there and you order it and half the menu is not even available. And so we do compliance checks every now and then, and sometimes that happens. You go in there and you have five items on the menu and two of them, you don't even have in stock. What we also see is limited number of staff, two establishments on our compliance checks have one total person working the counter, answering the phones, cooking the food, you know, waiting the tables, monitoring the slot machines. So, you know, that's one of the defenses we've used as well as, okay, there's no way you can run a restaurant and manage the whole thing yourself if you're truly trying to be a restaurant.
I have a quick question. Looking at the, 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 our intent of having this whole ordinance written up. Is this something maybe we need to rethink? I mean, why, why are we against just having a standalone video gaming parlor? I mean, video gaming has been in the village for over 10 years now. We haven't had issues with it. What, what, what detrimental impact would it be to the village to allow it?
So we've had several video gaming conversations and, and it's, it's been the, the board's intent. Every time we've brought it up in the last few years to allow it only for restaurants or for ones that qualify for like brew pub, which is, you know, similar to a restaurant. It's not been brought up to do the latter that you just mentioned. So it's always been, we want video gaming for established restaurants or to help fledgling businesses when they first start in, but they have to truly be a restaurant. No one is actually asked to look the route of being a video gaming parlor and allow it in. And then video gaming as the main advertisement. So for example, every time we, we put someone in violation, it's typically because the last 12 months or last four months of advertising on, you know, their digital media is 90% gaming, you know, there's no food being thrown first out there like, hey, look at our hamburgers. It's always come win money, come win money. Here's our slot machines. And then the last one is kitchen and cooking areas not being utilized fully. So you'll see apparatus in a, in a facility, but it's not necessarily being utilized. You know, or you see an apparatus in the back, you know, they have a kitchen, but they're not actually going back there and staging somebody back there to actually cook. It's just there in the building, you know, checking a box, so to speak. So we receive frequent inquiries about parlors and I do, you know, that's been going on for years. So we do, to your point, trustee Curtis, we do get calls a lot from places that just want to flat out be a video game in parallel, and we tell them, no, it's not allowed. Sometimes if it's borderline, one of the first steps is we, we may tell the liquor commissioner because they have the right to issue the license or not. Hey, would you like to sit in and meet with them about their plan and, and, and get a better feel before it goes to the board? We used to not go to the village board. It used to just go directly for a liquor license and then they would be able to video game if it was allowed. Now that change that we had a few years ago actually makes them present to the board a floor plan, a business model, so to speak. We've had that recently, the last couple of years since we've implemented that. Off the top of my head, we have World of Bowls, which is yet to open. Tracy's, which has been open for several months and Los Grisoles, which has been open for several months since early part of this year. And so that's where we're at right now. And then the feedback for tonight was, and it, and it's open, like you said, this is a workshop, so it's open for any questions, comments, ideas. Does the village board want to revisit any of the provisions? And if so, we put three bullet points up. These are topics that have been brought up in the past. You know, requiring a business to be in business for a certain amount of time, restricting video gaming signage, some towns might say you can't have video gaming signage in your windows, or they might have a requirement that 50% of all your Facebook posts that, that this one's I'm kind of making up, but you could do something like 50% of all your Facebook posts over the course of X number of months has to be food related. And then the most, if there was one that is the most complicated, but would be the most enforceable, it's the one that our attorney recommends in the middle, which is require review of establishments revenue upon request. So if you feel someone's acting as a video gaming parlor, you require them to open the books and show us their revenue stream for both video gaming, which we know legally because we have access to the state's website that provides how much money they get from gaming. And then they have to provide their, you know, loss and balance sheet, so to speak, to show us what kind of revenue they're bringing in. And if it's clearly, you know, tilted one direction, you can say, well, you're not a restaurant. And the argument would be, you can write the code in a way too, that would be so that you wouldn't be hurting a business that, let's say who's going through a tough time. So let's say you are trying to be a legitimate restaurant and you hit a tough patch and all of a sudden video gaming, maybe for a couple of months is actually slightly higher than your food. This review of the books only comes upon request. So basically, the mayor would have to think, I think they're acting like a video gaming parlor before we even request that. We don't have to request that. So those are just some thoughts we put out there. And with that, I'm leaving it open to the board. If you have any thoughts, questions, ideas.
Yeah, I have a thought. So I like the idea that middle request of revenue. So, so he would request it, meaning the mayor, and then look at the books, then what?
So typically, what we do and when we think someone's a gaming parlor is we, we reach out to them and we request a meeting with them. And attorney Drendel or someone from his office is usually present and Kevin would help guide us on what documents we legally have a right to see. And I don't know Kevin off the top of my head, but in an ordinance, I don't know what kind of documents we can require directly from them.
Yeah, so theoretically, we could do that now without it being specifically in the code on the basis that you qualify for a video gaming license. Number one, as ancillary to a restaurant, that means the primary business is selling food for service, you know, to people who come in to get to buy food. And how do you prove that? Well, you look at the revenues, you open the books and say, okay, how much of your revenues from video gaming? How much is it from selling food and beverages? And of course, restaurants also ancillary to liquor. You know, they, you need to be a restaurant first to get a liquor license. You need to be a restaurant first to get a video gaming license. So theoretically, because the code says that the video gaming has to be ancillary to being a restaurant, we could in, in a process for potential suspension or revocation of a license, require them to prove financially that their primary business is not video gaming. So we don't necessarily have to add it to the code. I guess one thought though was whether it makes, whether it's helpful to add it to the code, because if people see that, they might be more inclined not to take a chance on a video gaming parlor, if that's really what they are in the first place, but I don't know.
So based on the conversations we had internally, things are more enforceable when they're spelled out cleaner. And the next presentation you'll see tonight about parking signs is the same way. When it's written in black and white in a code, it's a little easier to say our code requires exactly this, you need to provide this versus you need to be ancillary and it leaves kind of a gray area. So it's an idea that if the board wanted to, we could leave it the way it is, or we could specifically put language in that, that goes after that.
Let me ask you this. So they do, we do add this to our code. We have a, maybe we think is a bad actor. And they, they violate the, you know, the, the comeback and obviously their money, the revenues for, you know, gaming. What is our remedy? Then we could like suspend them?
Yeah, or revoke it if, you know, suspend them or find them either way to try to get them to come into compliance. And if they don't come into compliance, then we revoke the license.
We have done that too. Well, two places, but successfully for one.
Yeah.
So I kind of liked that idea. They had that in, I think that's a clean way to do it.
Can you write the fine into the code then also so that they see what that fine could potentially?
But again, back to my question, why are we requiring them to have it to be a restaurant to have video gaming? I mean, we've had video gaming for how many years? Why, why can't we open it up to like a nail salon if they want to have video gaming? What exactly are we preventing by tying video gaming into a restaurant?
Nail salon wouldn't qualify because they're not a restaurant. Yeah, they wouldn't get a license.
But why do you need to have, is that a state law?
It's part of, the state law only allows you to have it in certain cases. And to my knowledge, the only exemption for being a not a liquor license holder would be if you're a gas station and that qualifies as a truck stop.
I, I just don't think that makes sense. I think that's a detriment. I'd rather have gaming parlors that don't serve alcohol than gaming parlors that do.
But that's part of the state law. You have to sell alcohol. There's no, that's state law. We can't change that.
Me personally, I don't want to see gaming at the wherever I go, buying Napa over there, getting auto parts. I mean, you know, that's why I think my own opinion is restaurants were kind of, and I was limited on that.
I agree with you 100%, but it's out of the bag now. So now picking winners and losers.
Yeah, I don't think.
If you want to open a gaming parlor, well, you also have to open a restaurant. Well, I don't want to run a restaurant. I want to run a gaming parlor.
And that's the rub right now. But yeah.
And you got to open a casino.
Right. And that's the thing too, if really, yeah, I mean, as we go, I mean, they're having issues. They have what 30 plus gaming parlors down there. And it's like
Sometimes.
And then it waters down. And right now, I mean, you could say the, the gaming does help the restaurant maybe survive the first year or two. It's also stimulus for the restaurant where if you could just go to the vacant strip center and throw your 50 bucks in. But maybe go.
Now we could say it's legal, but only for this segment.
It's a state thing.
Well, that's well, I think Laura, that's, I think the board decided that, like the last discussion we had in the 21. Correct. That was the first question. Do we, do we as a board not want gaming parlors? Then we all, yes, no, 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 no. Okay. But I'm saying that you're asking why, why is it that right now? It's because that's what we all agreed on a year and a half ago.
Well, no, we were, the, this, the discussion is, would we add this, any of the, any feedback to what we currently already have? Currently, they have to comply with all the different rules that we set forth in our, in our code. And if they don't, then we suspend their license and like Mark said, they closed one down. But what we, we're trying to do here is not make us a gaming parlor village. And by maybe adding some words to our code, that we can kind of restrict it and keep it to a restaurant owned facility where people each go in with their family and have food. And if they want to gamble, they can gamble, not just come in, pretend they're a restaurant and then, and then just gamble. So I think that's what we're discussing here.
Yeah, that takes it to the next point. Your last line is what I've been thinking all along, like you should have to be in business as a restaurant for a year before you can even get it. Prove that you're a restaurant and then you can get the, the cherry on top.
The only, I would be in that camp too, but the, the other side of that would be that I'm rookies or establish business hardware is going to open up Fortunato. And he may want gaming and we know he's a legit business, but he's going to have to wait a year or some businesses like Batavia, they'll let me do it. Or that's probably not a good example because I think you do have to wait a year in Batavia, but some other town, as we go. I can go down there and open up my restaurant and start gaming day one or when you get your license and so it could hinder development, you know, in the community.
What I've seen, just, you know, obviously having colleagues in other towns and talking to them. Batavia does have a one-year sit-out rule and, and the, the pro and con is the pro is obviously, if you're, if you're trying to prohibit gaming parlors, it makes someone have to sit for a year. The con is the first year for a restaurant is the toughest year typically, the first and second year. So you're also telling a business that wants to open up in town, you're going to have to struggle here, but you can go.
And I think that's why the, the board agreed. I don't think they want gaming at all, but they're like, we'll help a restaurant survive because we all want restaurants. So that, that was the thought the last 10 years really that, okay, it'll help them get going, sustain them for a while. Third year, they start making money and they started the gaming. But I mean, that was kind of the thought, not just have gaming parlors because of.
So then do they have to bring in a menu that we approve to offer that?
Precisely. Yeah. So that's the thing though. And, and what we're seeing is when they come to the village board and they present, they will present the menu. But a menu can change. And we had that argument from one of the places we put in violation recently.
Or they don't follow through. You know, they say here on record, we're going to do this, this and this. And I was like, I only got one guy, so and so said COVID economy. I only got a cook that can.
No one's buying hamburgers, so I'm switching to.
Right. I can't help it. People don't buy food when they come here. You know, that was some of the stuff we hear too, you know, it's just.
That, I will say this, no matter what town you look at, it has rules that either allows parlors or doesn't allow parlors. Everybody goes to the same things. When you talk to people in all the towns and.
Yeah, I don't think there's a silver bullet on this and, you know, it's a tough road.
Well, I mean, one of the things I think a lot of this discussion has to do with is Tracy's, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, I feel.
That's one of them.
I feel that when he came and presented, it was very shaky to begin with and has absolutely done nothing that he said he was going to do when he stood here. So I think we're trying to figure out a way to kind of catch that a little better than we did is kind of what this sounds like to me.
Right.
You know, I, I made this point before, and I think maybe it's, it's a way to discourage smaller little strip mall area type places from just basically duping us. And that is, you know, we, we want to offer this to places that are, you know, restaurants, bigger restaurants and happen to have gaming over here on the side. You know, my, my opinion back then was maybe allow them a certain number of machines based on their square footage. You know, so that we're not encouraging a small little, you know, hole in the wall place to open like, what's the one over that used to be Eddie's?
Ace Cafe.
You know, something like that where they can get the cheapest little slot, there's the cheapest little rent area, claim they're going to open the little, little kitchen and then slap in six machines, which takes up, you know, 80% of their floor space, you know, maybe a place like that. And we'd have to maybe figure out the math on it, but hey, if you have this many square feet, you only get three machines. Well, then they'll be like, well, no, we don't want that. And we won't try to get around your rules. You know, that was almost kind of like a prorated amount of machines based on your, the size of your establishment, you know, so that.
Do that? When we restrict machines?
Yes, as part of the liquor code, we can do it. So we can't directly regulate video gaming, but we can determine who it is that we will, are willing to give a liquor license to that would allow video gaming. So we, we put it in liquor code, basically that you know, in order to have video gaming with two machines, you have to have a minimum of, you know, X amount and so on.
And I think that might discourage all these people, I think, that are calling our village right now, saying, hey, I want to open this little, I mean, what, what is a small strip in town? What, what society?
Thousand square foot.
1500?
I don't even know.
I would say about 1500 to 2000 square feet.
Okay. And say, okay, I want to open this little 1500 square foot place. And yes, I'll serve food and I want to immediately slap six machines in there. If we tell them, hey, you can only have two machines, they're going to be like, oh, I'm not interested.
We can start saying, no, I mean, that's what we've been doing. So.
Sure. We don't, we don't even have to.
I get it.
Just like liquor license, say we have only 10 available. Isn't that right, Kevin? We can say, yeah, you have 10, you have to come before the board.
Yeah.
But yeah.
I think that would, that would at least give us a little more, or, you know, discourage people from trying to get around, bend our rules enough to, to get around it and, and reward those that really want to be a, a restaurant, you know, like, like turf room and hardware and Oak Street and these bigger places in town that happen to have games that are legit, you know? That was, that was, I, I just thought one way. I mean, I would be in favor of waiting, you know, six months to a year, but I get the, I see the point on some that, that are established already type restaurants that we have no, we have no concern with.
Bockets and they're like, yeah, we'll just.
Right.
What about that first item? Restrict or prohibit video gaming signage advertisement. What about that one?
Do, we don't have that, anything now.
Nothing specific to that. So.
Probably do that because like Ace Cafe or Nunu's over there, he had nothing that he had food. Actually, Tracy doesn't have, I don't think, you have to be over 21 to go to Tracy's.
What about putting that in there?
You have to be 21 to get into that place.
They have a sign on the door.
Yeah.
Well, then, I mean.
But I'm just saying, it's a side thing, but.
And that's a restaurant.
Yeah, yeah.
But the signage, so Tracy's is, is unique because we actually did tell them upfront, you're going down, this is months ago, and we told them to take the signage down because they had so much signage in their windows and all. And it was, oh, this is just the corporate stuff they put up and he complied right away, took it down, but that was.
But they sort of have other things up there, whatever.
Yeah, they still have like neon signs that say play slots and stuff.
I'd be in favor of prohibiting the signage.
How could, yeah, what can a, what can a limit can we do, Nathan? Or how would you quantify that as far as?
That one is a little bit difficult in that usually a signage, you can't regulate content. So you can't say, you know, what the sign can say, but you can regulate size, location. So if you can say, you know what? Your storefront can't have, the window can't have any signs. But if you say you can have signs, just not video gaming signs, the attorney might yell at me.
Or can you say percent of the windows? Yeah, you know, can only have 10%.
Yeah, some type of how much can you cover of the window or just none at all?
I, I would, I mean, Jason, Jason's right. I mean, Nathan's right. Jason's right too. But Nathan's right. Except that i- in this situation, it, it's a measure of whether you're a gaming parlor or not. So I, I would argue that there's still room for us to say, hey, look, you've got, I suppose maybe we shouldn't say, oh, you got to take those signs down. The better approach might be to say, oh, you're a gaming parlor. You can't do that.
That was the approach we took, which was you're looking a lot like a gaming parlor and they said, no, we'll take them down.
Okay, got it. So I think that's okay. But you're, you're right about, we can't regulate the content, but we're not really regulating the content. We're just saying that the fact that you've got 90% of your advertising is video gaming is okay, you're, you're violating our liquor ordinance.
In essence, we already can do that. So we don't need, yeah.
I mean, I would personally, I would like to see it added from a staff perspective because go back to the gray area. That is one of the ones that we use the most of when we do research on the companies and you're going through their Facebook posts and stuff. It would be nice to have kind of a metric.
Yeah, we should do that. I mean, I think that's.
You got nine out of your last 10 posts are gaming.
Yeah.
That's predominantly gaming.
Again, I don't know that we need to put that into code. That's just, you know, common sense.
But a lot of people don't have that or understanding of it or bending the rule. So.
I think just from my perspective, having dealt with this, you know, several times is, I think the mayor said it earlier about the bar, whatever you set the bar, whether it's put a kitchen in, they're going to put a kitchen. And if you, if you talk about building a space that not trusting edge, which is point about prorating it is a little different than saying you need to have at least 2000 square feet to even have video gaming, because someone who could afford 1800 square feet is just going to find a 2000 square foot place and pay a little bit more in rent because they're going to offset it with the gaming.
And if they had to wait six months, the, the, you know, to get their time in, somebody just pat, you know, just have the revenue to pay the six months and they open, you know, it's just all those things.
We have that definitive that the, the staff can use with the, the liquor commissioner, the mayor and say, no, you're absolutely violating this would be a lot easier. And I agreed with your comment earlier, Kevin, when you said sometimes having it in the code itself is a deterrent. So when Mike Toth meets with these companies, when they come in and say, we want, we're a restaurant. Well, Mike says, do you check these seven boxes? Because this is what you're subject to. Oh, you guys do that? Oh, we can't advertise. It's got to be food related. You know, maybe they're like, you know what? This isn't worth our time. Maybe it's a little bit more than.
That, you know, that's a good point, Steve, is to have in the liquor license application itself for the supplemental gaming license, a representation that they have to affirmatively sign up on that the primary sales are from liquor and not video gaming. And have it right there. They, they have to like make a representation. And if they can't check that off, then they're not, you know, they don't qualify for a license.
You tie that to number two and say, we have the right to check the books. And say, we have the right to check the books to affirm your your intent. That seems pretty lock tight.
Yeah. So how can we do that with the signage then? Because that's. The the problem ones that we have have that signage. There's nothing that says they have food. So always. Gaming, come early, stay late.
Yeah, I had a big gaming sign like.
I'm more than willing to have the board uh, give ideas. That's that's great, but something like this. If you want to give me the general like idea, like I want to prevent signage. What the staff will do is upon your ideas will also look around. And see if any other municipalities and how they do it to see if there's some thoughts. Remember, this isn't necessarily going straight to board again. It'll come back to the committee a whole again.
I think it's one more tool.
Yeah.
Yeah, like more of an advertisement. Provision because even mailers. If they send out a mailer like Rosati's does in Batavia, because we all get them. The majority of their advertisement is still for pizza. But it says, come in and check out our games too.
Yeah, I don't think nobody's against that. I mean, I think that's how it should be.
Yeah.
Restaurant first. Entertainment second, whatever you want to call it.
Think so. Does that mean that forty nine percent of their advertising can be video gaming?
Or you could say maybe twenty percent.
Do we? Do we have to automatically renew these peoples? These businesses like?
So, yeah, so there's no right to a liquor license.
Not automatic.
I'm not saying automatic, but say, say a place like Tracy's, their annual comes up. We say, you know what?
Yeah.
We don't like it.
Right.
I mean.
It's not working out.
Right. A- actually, that's not the case. The 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 law is clear that they don't, nobody has a right to a liquor license. They can come and ask for one. We say, no, they've got no recourse. Once they get one, it's considered a property right and you can't take it away without due process.
I'm the video game license.
And you can't not renew it without due process.
Okay.
It becomes a property right.
So trustee, to your point. We had that recently where we. Basically told somebody they were in violation. This goes back in February, our list, our liquor license start May, uh, March first. And we told them, you're in violation. And we're not going to renew, but we're not gonna, we can't take it away from you without due process. So we're going to put you into a hearing and give you basically a temporary. Supplemental video gaming license upon review as part of the hearing. And they ended up. Dragging out and then closing.
Yeah.
So as far as signage, I think.
Yeah.
Because it's. It's a, you know, ugly and people drive by. I mean, that's the first thing they see is all this.
A big chip in the window.
And it's usually that neon.
Yeah.
All the neon flashing.
Yeah, all that stuff, Vegas.
I trust you. Gately just said something and I it it jogged my mind. Earlier today, I was thinking along the same lines. Um. The idea of having it in your logo itself. Could be something we, I don't know if we have the right to that content. But if you're putting a poker chip. Or something video game related directly in the name of your in your logo. That to me is signifying that your. Your primary function is gaming and not rushing.
Oh, I feel too.
So then.
Even your logo or your your signage, your name on the building cannot have, you know, gaming.
But can they switch that? Come in and say, oh, it's gonna be, uh, you know.
But that could go under part of your advertising provisions.
Know what I'm saying though? Can they come in and 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 tell us it's going to be called Steve's Cafe? And then they put the sign up says Steve's Dice. Whatever. You know, I mean, what? You know, do the the Texas two step shuffle and next, you know, it's different than what we agreed to.
But just. That goes, that's a good question because that actually came up recently again with one that we put in violation. Halfway through, they changed their name.
Yeah.
And said, oh, no, no, we're not this. We we changed our concept completely. Does that trigger? Now, they actually got pre-approved before the board had the supplemental license. But in the future, if they change the name of the concept, we have that conversation with the attorneys. Actually, it's still the same ownership and. Owners have rights to their business to some degree. If they they can change a menu potentially without having to come back, there's no legal thing that says you can't sell hot dogs anymore.
Right, that's one of the problems we're having. You have forty items and you go back to three because we decided to change and.
And the menu thing has always been tough because they come in and that's the first thing we see changed. They show us a menu. This goes back three, four years ago. They show you a really nice menu. And then all of a sudden, it's a piece of paper with some bullet points on it.
Yeah. They got a hot plate and a little. Oven and that's what they have.
Well, that's why I think. Maybe considering a. A limit on machines would really help that out. If we if we were to go to A's and we can't do it now, but say, hey, your business qualifies for two machines. They'd be like, we're out of here. You know, we can't do that to them. I'm just saying.
I still like to see.
To prevent it from happening.
The revenue on that place because they have nobody ever in there.
And if that's the case, then you could potentially take it away, right?
Right. The slots are doing more than the.
Even the food. Because they have to have a liquor license first, right?
Right.
I think that would be um, right now, this is what I have written down for some some ideas. Um, I have. Uh, the tying to the books and and having some kind of affirmation at the time that they get their license that they will. Adhere to be in a restaurant and and not a video gaming parlor. Um, some limitation on advertising. Uh, the other thing was it goes back to the proportional, the size versus the number of machines. Um, which I'm guessing, Kevin, everything gets grandfathered in that's already there. So it'd be from this date forward. And then the other thing is uh, whether or not the board wants a waiting period. Uh, you have to be in business so long before.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
I don't think that.
I don't think that would be counterproductive.
Yeah.
Okay. But the business that closed actually did wait a whole year, didn't they?
That's that's an excellent point. They didn't have video game machines for over a year.
Yeah.
And then they got them and all of a sudden, soon as they got them, they changed their concept.
Video gaming.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So I I have, does anybody have any other ideas? I think this is good. Um, it might not even be. The next meeting might not even be the next, the last meeting for this because we might present research and ideas. And it might spur more.
Yeah, plus we're spot checking. So like you said. Um, periodically.
Basically now if they're on a radar.
Staff is going in to check the ones that are questionable. And we're going to keep doing that forever probably and make sure they. Doing what they said they would do and. And so.
Just on the revenue portion, so would. We have a hundred fifty six thousand a year and then plus the additional money per machine.
Uh, correct. The hundred fifty six thousand is for the revenue that's generated from the actual gambling sales off the machine. The other money is from the actual registration and license fees.
Per machine?
Per machine. So two fifty per machine.
Two hundred fifty dollars.
Two hundred fifty dollars per machine and five hundred dollars per establishment every year for their license.
And the one fifty is the our cut from the state and all that.
That's pretty good.
I mean, yeah, so it's fifteen hundred. If you have all six machines, it's fifteen hundred dollars for your machines and five hundred for uh, the supplemental license. That's on top of the fact that they still have to have a. Mother license, if you will, like they have to have a superseding license, a class A, B or C. So on.
All right. So they'll come back with some ideas.
Last thing on the signage. Um, I'm pretty sure the code already prohibits flashing, blinking neon. So if you guys know of stuff that, you know, because I'm not here at nighttime.
Tracy's.
Okay, so we'll we'll uh, we'll send our new community service officer, or maybe I'll have Marcy work a night uh, and go. Write them up for that.
All right, thank you. All right, item two, Steve, no parking areas.
Okay. So item number two on the agenda tonight is uh, regarding. No parking areas and. Just see if I can get this loaded. All right. I'm just gonna let my computer think for a second. There we go. And Dave Aron always tells me, stop hitting the buttons and just wait a second. So. As we just talked about, everything's more enforceable by code, having it in the ordinance. And. This all started with a, there was a couple of unique situations where we had semi trucks parking on right of way in an area that don't um, have any homes by it, doesn't have any homes by it, but. Um, we don't want semi trucks parking on our uh, right away on Evergreen. And uh, it was actually behind um, Homes in Aurora and we got a few calls. And the other one was this winter, we had a uh, a snow plowing. Um. But when there's more than two inches of snow, the cars aren't supposed to be on the street. But when you're salting or it's a light dusting of snow. We found at one neighborhood, the parking changed. A family had been in a house for thirty, forty years. It's never a problem. New family came in and started parking carts on the street, which is perfectly legal when there's less than two inches of snow. And our five yard, our main dump trucks that we use for plowing operations couldn't actually make a turn on a curve. Then when you start talking to people on the block about it. You find out that school buses and garbage trucks have the same issue. So that that was over on uh, John Street. And um, or sorry, State Street where it makes the turn to Robert.
Yeah.
That's that curve from State to Robert. And. With that, we decided we were going to do a full inventory of all areas and just say, you know what? Why go to the board and put two in the code? If there's ten that we really want to change at once. So while we're doing that. Uh, Brian and Brandon thought it was a good idea, which it was, to do a full inventory of all of our signs, you know, for GIS purposes and inventory of all of our no parking signs. And what they found was a hodgepodge. We we had a lot of signs on the street that aren't in our municipal code. And so we're wondering how they got placed. Uh, typically you you pass an ordinance and you put the sign out. Um, so that was the first issue. The second issue was there were times where the code, in a few cases, the code actually called for a sign, but there wasn't one out there. So we started looking at this and it goes back, we're talking twenty years ago. So. We put together a really comprehensive list of proposed areas that the staff would like the the board to look at to add signage. And we want to clean up all of the existing signs that are there, let you see which ones we found. Make sure you're okay with keeping them there. And then we were going to pass an ordinance that just puts it on a very nice and neat standard format. Everything's listed, easy to found, uh, find and maybe like a table format. And right before the meeting, about two hours before the meeting, Kevin Drenel calls me and says. Hey, I was looking into that and I found a whole bunch of ordinances passed for these signs that never got codified back in like two thousand one to two thousand four. So apparently the board did approve a lot of the signs that are out there, but for whatever reason, didn't get codified twenty years ago. So for that purposes, when it says proposed on the list up there, it's very likely that it actually got approved twenty years ago and just never got codified. So either way. We're doing a full cleanup and just want to make sure everyone's uh, you never want to do anything without board approval, not only for your authority. But just remember, every no parking sign causes a traffic shift. Which is going to affect some residents. So if you're telling one side of a street, they can't park on that side of the street again. Those cars are still going to park somewhere. They're just going to find their way down another block. So. That's why we're always cognizant before we make any changes of those types of situations. So Brian's going to take you through. I'm just the driver.
A little bit of background. So like. How we. Kind of choose when to use no parking is um, significant amount of on-street parking causing difficulties for village operations and or. Emergency uh, response vehicles. Um, arterial roadways with high traffic volumes where cars may cause um, safety issues and disrupt the traffic flow. Um, uncurb roadways where parking would cause damage to the edge of the road. And you can't park on grass technically. And then um. Locations where we where uh, parked vehicles create sightline and sight distance concerns because those are the kind of the four. Standards that we look for. So. Uh, so to start here, uh, you'll see we have Deer Path Road, Tanner Road and Zepelac. Um. Obviously Deer Path is has no curbs and it's a busy road. Um, Tanner Road as well. Um. And then Zepelac is the the new road uh. By the seasons connecting Orchard Road and Deer Pass. So those are our busy streets that we wouldn't want anybody parking on.
And please just make comments if you have any as we go through it. If there's no comments, I'll just go to the next slide.
Uh, are these the the entire list of places that you're going to put no parking? You're recommending?
Correct. Either that we're going to put them or that they have existing signs out there and we just want to make sure they get put in the code.
Just three play, three play?
Oh, no, no, there's.
We're just getting started.
There's a few slides.
Oh.
Okay, slide two. Um, so this area is uh. Deer Path Road again, which is an arterial road. And then Orchard um, Gateway is an arterial road with obviously the trucks and the traffic. Um. You really don't want anybody parking on the side side of there because there's really. No room from for parking.
And not to mention traffic patterns historically, no one's parking on a lot of these roads already because they're busy roads that are forty miles per hour and whatnot.
And so the next one is Ice Cream Drive. It's arterial road. Um, Alder Drive, arterial road, Airport Road is arterial road with no curb, a lot of truck traffic in this area. Um. Smoke Tree Plaza, obviously their uh, sight distance and vehicle access. And then Evergreen is where we're having the problems with the the semis just using it as. As their own personal parking lot. Um, they they park their trucks there. They. They leave, uh, they come back the next day, but they park their car there, take the truck. And so they're basically just using it as a as a parking lot.
They also have a lot of fly dumping in that area.
A lot of what?
Fly dumping, uh, people just dropping off a sofa chair, just throwing it on the side of the road and leaving.
Oh.
It's the only place in town that we really have that issue.
Hmm. So hopefully this will kind of cut that, cut that down as well. So the next one would be, obviously Randall Road is is a busy arterial road. Um, Comiskey, just a short, short section there where you wouldn't want anybody parking um, as you're pulling up to Randall Road. And same thing with Ritter, he wouldn't want anybody parking uh, to cause site issues there as you're pointing out under Randall. Um. So this is the, this was the, one of the newer areas. So this is a Robert Street. It's vehicle ac- access and sight distance. And then State Tree, State Street is the same thing, vehicle access and sight distance. Um. This curve is. Is. We've had a lot of people complain over there that, you know, from the garbage truck, the the bus, um. The bus actually ended like go knock on doors to actually get people to move their cars so they could actually. Make the the turn to pick up the kids. So it's it's. Has a lot of parking over there. So that's kind of one of the the newest areas.
We had a couple, at least one or two residents. That called and thought we missed their house from salting operations and we said, no, we went back to get a smaller truck. So.
Uh, so this one is Spruce Street. Um, the vehicle access and the Butterfield Annex Road vehicle access. Um, this is that with the apartments on the east side. Um. They have parking permits. Uh, some of the people I believe don't want to pay for the extra parking permit. So they park on the street. Um, and what they do over there is they park across from each other and it makes it really difficult in the winter to plow. And then, you know, for all the other vehicles to get by.
And we actually, um, that's one that did get codified a few years ago. We did put uh, no parking on one side, I believe on Laurel.
Yes. So obviously we have a Banbury Road, uh, portions with no curb and it's a uh, arterial road. So we wouldn't want anybody out parking on the side there. And that's only a limited section. It's not, wouldn't be by the by the school. It would be uh, starting at Sharon and heading. I guess that'd be north. Then uh, this one is um. Oak Street, uh, no curbs, portion segmented arterial road. Um, Hidden Creek, East Victoria Circle. That's the, we had. Uh. Did that years ago for the the parking there. And then um, Fox Hill Lane is is vehicle access. Um, that road got really busy.
I have a question. When you're talking about Hidden Creek and East Victoria Circle over in Summerwind, isn't that already no parking?
It is, it is. So some, we're trying to clear up whether it's like in the code already. So some of these might be in there as Kevin found. Um, so we just want to be sure that it 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 gets put in the code. So when they go to enforce it, it's it's in the code. So some of these are already out there.
So these are, we just switched over. We're adding, these are the ones that are out there in the public right now. This one is add to code, but I believe before the meeting, Kevin actually found that there was an ordinance for those signs. Uh, for that area.
Yeah, we do have some.
Kind of clean cleaning up the whole.
Yeah.
The whole thing instead of doing like one here or there, we kind of want to do it all as. As as one, so everything matches.
We we have some ordinances that are not codified. And we have some. Um. Sinage areas that may or may not have an ordinance actually that supports it. So. This is going to clean everything up. And it's kind of, it it's probably good to revisit too, because you know, maybe. Where we have no parking doesn't make sense anymore for some reason.
There's a few of those in here that I think we'll touch on. So obviously, um, Oak Street is an arterial road. Sycamore is a vehicle access um, with the park there. Um, parking on both sides of the street makes it difficult for vision when you're uh, in that area. So this is some State. Pearson Hettinger, um, this parking on one side of the street and it's basically for uh, vehicle access in those areas. There's some other, these are kind of. Together, uh, Oak Street. Uh. Obviously, the lower part of Oak Street there is arterial and vehicle access. Monroe Street, same thing with the fire department down there, vehicle access.
Can you back up the the slide before? Did you have Pierce Street on there?
Uh, yes.
So is that, that's that's new or that's already current? That'll be new, north side of the street?
It is there. It is. It is uh, already posted.
Okay.
It already, yeah, that's a, those streets are extremely narrow over there. So if they park on.
Yeah. So you're just adding that.
We're just making sure it gets in the code.
Yeah. So, uh, State Street, the same thing with vehicle access and a sight distance. So the next one is April Lane, sweet vehicle adra- uh, access. Laurel Drive is also with the, the apartments over there. So it's the access, um, for there. Uh, D Road is vehicle access and the Hill Ave is vehicle access as well.
So back to that one again. So just so I understand, April Lane is currently no parking on our side or is that?
Correct.
Okay.
That had to do with, um, baseball years ago, when they, when they would park in there, um, they would park on both sides of the road and it would just clog up that, that whole.
Is it just no parking during that timeframe or is it no parking?
I believe those signs up there have, uh, have a timeframe on there as from April to April to.
July line or something. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And so here's some ones that we discussed in-house, um, to like remove from the code. So it's, uh, Magnolia Drive by Dogwood. Um, signs are currently not installed there. I don't, they never were installed. Um, we discussed with the police department in the house that we haven't had any issues there. I believe that's when we, uh, opened up that road to go out onto Randall Road. So I believe people are parking too close to the stop signs, which already is a, as a state enforceable law. So, uh, that's why we haven't had any problems. So it's probably worth revisiting and removing it. And then the same thing is the Fairfield Way signs, um, and then Aster Court, that was a added three-way stop sign there. So, um, I think when we did that, the purpose was to, so people do not park in the intersection. However, that's already a, a state law. So it's enforceable by the police. So there's really no need, um, you know, for the signs there. So it just kinda cleans up the, the areas where you know, we, we haven't seen issues and.
Were they parking there for the park? You think?
Yeah, they were parking in, like in the, in the T there, the T of the intersection, which technically you can't park. And then I believe there was a few people that were pa- parking extremely close to the, the stop signs. So obviously that's still, you know, enforceable by the, the police.
I think when we looked that one up on Google Maps, they actually had the stop sign, still had the flag on it from when they put the stop signs up, which is probably when the no parking signs got taken down. And that's it.
That's it. I'm amazed that you don't have, uh, Columbia Circle on there, Brian. Uh, that, that has the biggest congestion on that southwest bend. They park on both sides and it's fairly consistent. And you, there's a one lane thing and you cannot see who's coming through. And to carry on from there, as you come up Wingfoot from Oak Crest Pinehurst intersection and try to make a right there, as people are parking across there and making it a very tight curve. If there are two old cars coming at the same time. So I think you really ought to look at that. And I've also mentioned before that we probably should use a yield sign coming from Columbia Circle onto Wingfoot Drive. Uh, and I'll explain that because Columbia Circle straight goes straight into Wingfoot. But Wingfoot there makes a left turn. If you straighten out Wingfoot there, you'll see it's actually a side street. And many times I've gone from a, a place there where I know, uh, my partner lives there, I'll come and go past the turn on Wingfoot and the cars always yield to me, expecting me to go. But if someone realized that it wasn't, there would be a nice head on there too. So there's a couple of issues I think we ought to look at as well.
I, I agree. I was gonna bring that up because I live in that neighborhood too. That curve where Wingfoot turns into Columbia to the left and goes Wingfoot to the right. Um, there's a house with a circular driveway and they've got two or three cars that, and somehow I think one of them's a big pickup truck. And when they're parking there and then there's cars on the street, a lot of people coming around that curve are coming fast. And they're, they can't see another car coming because of the cars in the circular drive. And I know I've seen a couple of times where people are driving in the middle of the road and I've almost gotten into quite a few situations. So I do think something needs to be done at that intersection.
You're talking about the same corner and, uh, several times this summer, they were parked on both. They had a party or something. They had a both sides of the street and it was like a one lane tunnel. You couldn't, you hope no one was coming, you know? Uh, if someone was coming fast, we would, there would have been definitely a head on.
We can definitely look into that and monitor that and see if it, if it.
And it looks like that Evergreen, uh, Hidden Creek Circle. Anyway, you, if we're gonna look at that, we should certainly, I think, take a look at the what we're talking about, the Columbia Circle.
Sure.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah, I think, uh, Hartsburg and Hawksley need to be looked at as well. I don't know if some temporary signs were put up just because school started.
Yeah, they, um, but I kinda think. For that, the, the, the day, um, the school, they were parking on there and obviously nobody could get through over there. So that was, I think, uh, Sergeant Psycho was talking about possibly looking into doing, um, one side of the street over there as.
Like around that whole circle, I think it would make sense because.
There actually is.
Ball school, all that.
That's one of the ones that isn't in the code. There's an ordinance on it. So that, again, that's part of the cleanup of.
So also in the code too, it's like it has, the school zones broke out. So each school zone has its, this is kinda just the no parking for the street. So each school has like its own uh, set in the code for Fern, Goodwin, it ha- it has it in there. So that's something we haven't got to yet to, um, to look at, but we can, we'll look into there as well.
Yeah, I just noticed the temporary signs and I was like, all right, that'd be a good one to bring up because it's really a year round thing.
Okay.
Sure. It's by my house.
Anything else? Jason, good then. Everybody? Steve, get what you need.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. All right. Motion adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All's the same. Good night, everyone.